Excellent. I think I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you all for joining us. It is April 2nd. It's 5:30 PM and this is our City Council regular meeting. May we start with a roll call, please?
Councilor Woodruff.
Here.
Mayor Protem Buehl.
Here.
Councilor Yasi.
Here.
Mayor Yusef.
Here.
Councilor Basbans.
Resident.
May we have the introduction of the translator, please?
Yes. Hello, everyone. My name is Ruth and I am here with the CLC and with my peer Sam. And thank you so much for practicing language justice. As you know, we want to make sure that we are creating spaces where everyone can participate and listen. For the folks who are going to be listening to interpretation, once it's turned on, please make sure to select your channel. You will see the globe icon at the bottom part of the screen. From there, you can select the channel that you prefer to listen in. As a reminder, please remember to speak at a conversational pace just so that we have enough time to interpret everything that is being said.
Thank you so much. With that, we will move on to opening remarks by mayor and council. Councilors, do you have any opening remarks? I just want to remind everyone then, seeing none, that anyone who might want to speak tonight during any portion of our agenda, to please sign up ahead of time on the portal in the foyer and virtually there is a link to sign up as well. Thank you so much. And with that, we will move on to presentations and proclamations. I have one presentation or proclamation on International Dark Sky Week. Is there anyone who will be accepting this tonight?
Waylon Ryan will be accepting this.
Okay, great. I guess I could have stayed in my seat. International Dark Sky Week, April 6th through 13th, 2024. Whereas the aesthetic beauty and the wonder of a natural night sky is a shared heritage of all humankind. And whereas the experience of standing beneath a starry night sky inspires feelings of wonder and awe, and encourages a growing interest in science and nature, especially among young people and out-of-area visitors within Durango. And whereas Colorado currently has 10 certified international dark sky parks, and five international dark sky communities, some of the most at any state level in the world. And whereas astrotourism within Colorado and Durango brings significant economic benefits to the surrounding communities. And whereas Durango is currently pursuing international dark sky community certification through updating lighting policies and increasing education. And whereas Durango is home to Fort Lewis Observatory, which hosts several research-grade telescopes. And whereas light pollution has scientifically established economic and environmental consequences, consequences which result in significant impacts to ecology and health of all communities. And whereas 80% of the world's population, including many people in Colorado, live under a dome of light pollution, excessive artificial lighting at night that disrupts natural darkness and may never experience the visual wonder or ecological and health benefits of living underneath a dark sky. But living in Durango offers these opportunities. And whereas the International Dark Sky Association headquartered in Tucson, Arizona, is the globally recognized authority on light pollution, and has created International Dark Sky Week to raise awareness of light pollution and provide free education, resources, and solutions to the public to encourage the protection of and enjoyment of dark skies and responsible outdoor living. Now therefore, I, Melissa Yusef, Mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim April 6th through the 13th, 2024, as International Dark Sky Week in the city of Durango, Colorado. And I ask each resident to join me not only in observing and pondering upon this important week, but also in raising awareness and support for protecting our precious dark sky resources. And here is a signed proclamation for you. And would you like to add anything for us?
Thank you, council. I just want to say light pollution is one of the easiest forms of pollution that we as humans can roll back. And there's a multitude of health, safety, economic, and of course, quality of life benefits. So I thank you for taking this into consideration.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our city manager updates.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, I am here to provide an update on our 2024 employee survey. As Tom pulls this right up. Perfect. Thank you, Tom. Wanted to provide the council, which some of this information was already provided you via email, but I think it's also important to share with the community the improvement that we have seen in our employee survey results. For those that were here when I was hired, I think that would be you, mayor, in 2020. I did say that a culture change would take probably about four years to accomplish. In 2022, we did our first employee survey results, or first employee survey, which is done through a third party. So it is absolutely confidential and provides feedback in regards to how we are doing and how the employees view the organization. In 2022, some of those scores, just kind of like the community survey scores, some of them you kind of wonder, oh, wow, where are we doing? But what it does is really show the areas that we need to work on and addressing, and really becomes that benchmark to see what we look forward to in those next two years as we've looked at being able to look at addressing some of the feedback that we received from the survey. I'm happy to show that in 2024, our participation rate, it was 97.3% of our full-time employees participated, which was a 24.8% increase from 2022. The national benchmark of municipalities across the country is at 76.9%. So well above the national benchmark in the participation with our employees. At 97%, I think it shows a very good representation of where our employees see us. Our employee engagement score was 81.3% and that engagement score is relied on job satisfaction and likely to stay as their answers. That was a 12.3% increase from 2022 and above the national benchmark of 75.1%. Our net promoter score was 22.9%. That was a 32-point increase from 2022. The national benchmark is 14.5. And so that net promoter talks about how many more active promoters that people are in our organization that are actively recommending and promoting this as a great place to work, taking away from the detractors that we say this is not a great place to work. So if you look at that promoter score being at 22.9 and the national benchmark being at 14.5, it really shows that we have way more promoters for the organization as a great place to work. Our supervisor effectiveness score is 81.6%, which was an 11% increase from 2022. The national benchmark is 75.3%. And we had an increase in every category but one from 2022. That one was our health plan value. Obviously, we did have to make some reductions in our health plan because of our self-insurance fund. We saw a moderate decrease of 5.7, but it's still currently favorable at 84.6. So it really is showing, I think, the work that we've been placing together. And if you look at the areas that we've scored above the national benchmarks for municipality is on job satisfaction, likely to stay, right resources for the job, job duties matched, job description, independent work assignments, variety and tasks, career growth, good teamwork, supervisor, a good communicator, supervisor fairness, supervisor support, supervisor feedback, supervisor values input, supervisor recognition, health plan valuable, still above national benchmark, retirement valuable, time off valuable, and the belief in mission. So what I think you see in this is the metrics showing, the data showing that an organizational culture shift has occurred. Our employees are engaged. There is a lot of positivity that is going on in our organization. And that is absolutely a contribution to our executive leadership team, our managers, our supervisors, who all in 2022 took those first survey results, put a plan of action. We put together a employee survey cross-functional team that did a lot of work in addressing these issues and very proud of this organization, very proud of the team that we have here, and really appreciate the support that the city council has shown in embracing this culture change. And I think we're really starting to see what that can look like. And we don't stop now. In two more years, we'll have another survey and we're going to look to improve where we can and maintain where we can. But we continue to do this. This is part of making sure that we're effectively listening to our employees and them having the ability to confidentially send their feedback to ourselves and the executive team.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say that it's not just anecdotal anymore. You know, we talk a lot about the culture shift and how highly performing the, not only the leadership team that you put together, but the executive leadership team and then all the staff as well. It's, again, it's not just anecdotal. Like, we have data-driven decision-making now to show that how great of a place it is to work. And it's obviously a testament to your leadership. I can't say it enough that, you know, we're on a great trajectory to do even better things than we've already done. And I'm looking very much forward to how we're going to progress over the next few years. So thank you so much.
Other comments from council? Excellent. Yeah, right. The survey does speak for itself, but I just, I think it is, it's such a wonderful point. You know, another data point that we can look at, and it does show a lot about your efforts to rebuild the culture from within. And I'm so thankful for, one of the things that we also presented in our Eggs and Issues presentation was that on that executive leadership theme, I think it's important to note that we have over 60% internal promotions for those positions, over 50% females in those roles, and for Fort Lewis College graduates, which I think is really great as well. Promoting local from local, right? So just great. It's a really good demonstration of the work that's being done. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you to our executive leadership team, our supervisors, our managers, all of our employees, and especially our employee survey cross-functional team for their hard work.
Excellent. Thank you for that update. So we'll do that again in two years, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Moving on then to committee, board, and liaison reports. I'll just start. I had my city office hours, which already feels like it was so long ago, on March 13th, after our last meeting. Several weeks ago now, but several residents came to talk about La Posta Road. They called it Malfunction Junction and Downtown Next Steps. So that was productive. I attended the LPA Board meeting on March 13th. Also, I spoke to the board about our desire to move forward promoting clean energy and making solar energy more widely available in our community. And I also spoke with Councilor Woodruff at the Eggs and Issues Forum for the Chamber of Commerce. Councilor Woodruff spoke with me as the liaison to the chamber board. And we gave a presentation and it went really well. And I wanted to thank Councilor Woodruff for doing that with me. We had a good time. So that's all I have, you guys.
Yeah, it was a busy three weeks. We had the Creative Economy Commission on the 26th. I actually did miss that meeting to do the Eggs and Issues meeting, but I was able to touch base with Tommy. They had lots of conversation around the 2023 Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture Funds and how they were used. A total of $241,000 went back into the local economy. And that was towards labor, materials, rent, and services. So it's kind of a testament to how those dollars, grant dollars, were spent locally. And then of the Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture Grants that were given out, they were allocated 168,000 to independent artists, $162,000 to institutional or large keystone organizations that provide services and events year-round, 69,000 to local businesses, and 90,000 to local nonprofits. So it's just really great to see how something came out of an idea of 14% to really see what those creative impacts are and how it's helping boon our creative economy. So it's really cool to see the, kind of, the debrief side of all the work that we did last year. Also did the Chamber of Commerce on the 19th of March. We spoke about some upcoming state legislative issues that could potentially impact businesses in Durango and La Plata County. We spoke about some upcoming state legislative issues that could potentially impact businesses in Durango and La Plata County. So they're kind of keeping a finger on the pulse there. And we also spoke to some of the educational components of 9R and how they're addressing the local workforce. Always an ongoing discussion. And also the chambers helping support and sponsor the Small Business Development Center for Southwest Colorado and their business conference on May 8th, so more to come there. And segue into that, just as you said, Mayor Youssef, we did the State of the City address to the Chamber Eggs and Issues on March 26th. You know, it was great to talk about housing and economic development, community development, parks and rec, public safety, all the things that we kind of intuitively know, but to really put that out there in the public purview of like all the great work that we're doing and continue to do. I also was present at the mock city council meeting with Anus High School on the 13th, same day as your office hours. So it was really cool to see the 11th graders be engaged and a part of like one of these. And so it was really cool to be a part of that. And then also attended the Engage Durango Forum on the 26th. So it was really cool to be a part of that and watch Tony give all of his great presentations as usual. So thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay, go ahead.
I had the opportunity to attend Eggs and Issue Forum and actually watched Melissa and Dave give the presentation about everything we accomplished on the city of Durango. And I myself was in awe of how much we got done when the presentation on that PowerPoint was going back and forth, and they were talking about the things that we accomplished at City Hall. So I was really, I was impressed. And so that was the morning. Then in the evening, on the 26th, I also was asked by Fort Lewis College to be a judge for their Hasoni Days Ambassador Committee. And I don't know if everybody's familiar with Hasoni Days. It's like the American India celebration up at Fort Lewis College. So we selected two new ambassadors to represent Indigenous perspective for Fort Lewis College. And then the next day, on March 27th, I attended the Southwest Water Conservation District's Water Conference out in Inacio, and that was an all-day event. So I thought that was really well worth attending because we got to hear different perspectives about water law and how water is being used in Colorado. And a couple of things they touched on was like Colorado's interstate water compacts and how we how we don't have enough water long-term, you know, in general, and also Colorado water law. And then we also got to learn about some of the the water from northern Colorado. So it was a very informative conference, and I was glad that I attended. And then so on March 30th, I went to the Native American Alumni Breakfast at Fort Lewis College, and it was very well-attended by some of our Fort Lewis College graduates, and it was very fulfilling to see how many people attended and all the accomplishments that they have completed over their short term out in the business world. And then at 4:00 PM, I attended the Hasoni Days Powwow and did the entry at 4:00 PM with the alumni group. And then I think that's all.
That sounds like enough. Thank you.
I also just wanted to remind everyone I have office hours tomorrow at noon at the library. So if you want to stop in and chat about anything city-related, I will be at the library in the foyer area at noon tomorrow. Have cake, Luke. Just kidding. Okay.
Is that it? Okay. No update, Counselor Basman? Okay. All right, we will move on then to item number seven, Public Comment on Agenda Items. Fay or Mark, may we have a reading of the rules for this portion of the public participation?
This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to make comment on topics that are published on tonight's agenda under Agenda Items 8, 9, and 11. When your name is called, please step to the podium and begin your comments by stating your full name, the topic, and if you are a resident of the city of Durango. Please make your comments directly to council and do not expect a response from council or staff. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Unused time is not transferable to other speakers. Comments must be specific to city matters, personal attacks, profanity, hate speech, derogatory remarks, and speech unrelated to city matters or other speech that is disruptive to the meeting will not, will be ruled out of order by the chair, and any remaining time will be forfeited by the speaker. Exceeding your time limit infringes on the rights of others and is out of order, and only a majority vote of the council can extend time limits. And with that, I will pull the signup sheet here.
Thank you. And we'll do virtual after, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you let me know if anyone's signed up to speak under 8.4.1?
Yes, give me just one second to research that. Looks like we have 10 people signed up under 8.4.1. And one under 9.1, a related item.
Got you. And this is, this is new for us. It's the first time. That's why I interjected here. It is a hearing. It would take place at this meeting when you meet as the Liquor License Authority. I was out of town until yesterday, but I did receive communication that the respondent wishes that the matter be reset. So he has the opportunity to get an attorney. Our witnesses that we had here today, I wouldn't have sent them home. So that's going to be pulled from the consent agenda and then reset for the April 16th date. So anyone who signed up to speak for it tonight, it's not going forward tonight. We'd ask that they come back on the 16th.
I hope that's clear for everyone.
Sure.
Yeah, that's correct. That's right.
16th.
April 16th, 5:30 PM. Thank you.
I have clarification. We don't need anything from council saying that they, okay, so we need to make a motion for...
I didn't want too much people to get up and speak on it first.
Right, so...
We'll pull it for consent agenda, and then you guys can move to officially reset it on...
Copy that. Thank you.
Okay, this just goes to show you, getting ready for the 16th. Oh, good. Okay, with, with that, Fay, do we have anyone who would like to speak under item number seven?
So the only one I have signed up is Jennifer Medina under 8.1 approval of minutes. But that may have been 8.4.1, and she hit the wrong box.
I'm guessing that might be the case unless Jennifer might be present. I think that might be the case.
And then I have one under item 11.1, which would also fall into this category. Norma Condori.
Is Norma Condori here, and would Norma like to speak?
And said she is online.
Oh, okay. Can we bring her forward?
Yes, Mayor. Give me just one second. I'm not seeing a Norma.
Okay.
Yeah, they're signed up as Norma Orejo Condori.
She is one of my group members. I don't know that she was planning to speak.
Okay. Okay, thank you for clarifying for us. Thank you so much. All right then, thank you for all of that. Fay, may we have a reading of the consent agenda, please?
Item 8.1 is approval of minutes. We have four sets of minutes on the approval tonight. The regular meeting from March 5th, 2024, the city council regular meeting on March 12th, 2024, the city council special meeting on March 12th, 2024, and one late-breaking item from December 5th of 2023. That one was omitted from the consent agenda in January, and this is catching up on that one. And obviously, the 8.4.1, which is a motion to convene as the Durango Liquor Licensing Authority to conduct a hearing to consider the revocation of 8th Avenue Tavern's liquor license. And that completes the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Is there any council that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda this evening?
I'd like to remove 8.4.1 from the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Basman?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Yaazee?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Buul?
Yes.
Counselor Woodriff?
Yes.
And then do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus 8.4 from one as well?
So moved.
Second.
May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Woodriff?
Yes.
Counselor Yaazee?
Yes.
Counselor Basman?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Buul?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes, thank you. All right, moving on to 11.1. And we do need to do 9.1 still?
So 8.4.1 is 9.1. We did that so we didn't have to change the agenda and create a special category.
Okay.
But that is pulled. I did have a chance to speak to the respondent. He does want it reset for the 16th, so you just need to form a motion to do that.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm sorry for that. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to establish continuance for the constituent from 8.4.1 until next meeting, April 16th.
Second.
Any discussion from council? Roll call, please.
Counselor Yaazee?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Woodriff?
Yes.
Counselor Basman?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Buul?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on now to 11.1. May we have a reading of the motion, of the agenda item, please, Fay?
11.1 is a resolution to make amendments to the 2024 adopted budget for the purpose of increasing personnel in the Airport Enterprise Fund submitted by Tony Vaccari of the airport. This will be Resolution R 20240020, if approved.
Someone get that?
24.
Thank you, and we have a staff presentation. Tony?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tony Vaccari, Aviation Director at the Durango La Plata County Airport. As was introduced, this is just simply a resolution authorizing an amendment to the 2024 adopted budget specifically focused on increasing personnel in the Airport Enterprise Fund. Just quick background summary, what we're looking at tonight or what is being proposed is the addition of an 11th overall full-time staff position in the airport's Aircraft Rescue Firefighting, also known as ARF, and Operations Division. Just as background, this division is responsible for emergency response at the airport. That includes fire rescue response as well as medical response. And then in addition to that, they also administer our full FAA and TSA compliance for the airport. It's a very diverse position and ends up being the front line for the majority of response at the airport across the board, medical, fire, emergency, and otherwise. This does represent over half the full-time staff at the airport. We currently have 21 FTEs, of which 10 are in our Aircraft Rescue Firefighting Operations Division. The team does staff 365 days a year, almost 24 hours a day on a continual basis to be able to do that. And these are mandated positions by the FAA. You must have Aircraft Rescue Firefighting certified personnel on site whenever commercial airline traffic are arriving or departing at the airport. As the airport continues to grow, as we talked about earlier in the study session, we're up 16% year-to-date in overall passenger traffic, building on a record year last year. We need to continue to ensure that the airport fund is positioned from a personnel perspective to manage that growth. You know, with that growth, we see increasing daily demands on our staff on all levels. And so this is in direct response to that, making sure that we're positioned to manage that growth and be proactive out in front of it. And then lastly, the Airport Commission did review and unanimously approve this position addition in their March meeting. Just a quick overview on overall benefits. First off, we envision we can provide increased levels of service to both our tenants in the airport and the traveling public. These positions are public-facing, obviously both in an emergency response role, but in day-to-day operations at the airport. They're the ones that are responding to the curbside, the parking lot, or the aircraft whenever there's a need, whether that be significant or minor. We're also looking to improve flexibility with our shift coverage during PTO and training. The team is relatively tightly scheduled right now, and adding another position will greatly increase the flexibility to be able to send our team off for off-site training, which can be critical to improving their skills for emergency responses in particular. And then also being able to really manage and promote work-life balance through making sure that we're able to fulfill the majority of PTO requests in this division. Additionally, we're looking to reduce staff schedule disruption during vacancies. Again, being a somewhat tightly scheduled division, when we do have an inevitable vacancy, it does put a significant amount of pressure on the remaining staff to fill scheduled shifts. And this will create a significant additional buffer for us as we're able to manage those vacancies more effectively with less disruption to our team. And lastly, reduced shift coverage by supervisory staff. Kind of in that same example, we often have to lean on our supervisory team to be able to cover shifts under our current staffing arrangement. And as the airport's revenues are now in a positive environment, to be able to potentially add this position, that'll free up our supervisory staff to really focus on high-level tasks, executing the work plan of the airport, and ultimately, the strategic plan of the city council. From a fiscal perspective, this would increase the annual operating expenses of the Airport Enterprise Fund by just shy of $80,000, inclusive of salary and benefits. That represents just under a 2% total increase to our operating expenses at the airport on an annualized basis. The particular resolution tonight is for a lesser value of about $56,000. That's just simply reflecting the fact that we're appropriating only for 2024, which is already partially complete. But ongoing, you'd see about an $80,000 impact on an annualized basis. And this is very well-supported by airport revenue streams. We're currently seeing strong revenue performance through the first two months of the year. We're already tracking between a 10 and 11% above adopted budget increase on our operating revenue. So this is a pretty conservative addition for us, given the fact that we're seeing very healthy revenue levels on the operating side that can support this kind of addition. So with that, I'll take any questions before a potential motion.
Thank you so much. Questions from council? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution R-2024-0020 to make amendments to the 2024 budget for the purpose of increasing personnel in the Airport Enterprise Fund.
Second.
Council discussion? Thank you for a great presentation, Tony.
Thank you.
May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Basman?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Buul?
Yes.
Counselor Woodriff?
Yes.
Counselor Yaazee?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes. Thank you. May we have a reading of item 4, excuse me, 11.2, please?
11.2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to close on the purchase of a workforce housing unit at 166 East 33rd Street as directed by city council on March 12th, 2024, and authorized by ordinance 2023-0020 submitted by the Community Development Department. This resolution, if approved, would be Resolution 2024-0021.
Thank you. And it looks like we have a presentation, Scott Shine? With Eva's backup, I see.
Team effort.
Team effort.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is a follow-up from your last meeting where you gave direction to pursue this opportunity. So this is just to close the loop on that. And to begin, we just wanted to highlight maybe on the next slide, how this activity directly ties to the affordability and economic opportunity strategic plan goal. And I'll speak a little bit to the return on investment that we've been able to get using housing fund dollars to leverage private investment, leverage federal and state money to get a good return for our community in regards to housing opportunities across the whole spectrum of affordability. So as I mentioned earlier, the Gage Apartments is a key project for rental housing, and we were able to use a fee waiver to secure 14 rent-restricted units for 10 years. And that was $26,600, so under $2,000 a unit to secure those through our negotiations during annexation. For the residences at Durango, we were able to bring in $4 million in federal and state grants. Um, divide that or by a hundred and twenty units, and that's thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars a unit for very low-income, uh, rental housing units that will be, uh, maintain their affordability for forty years. Uh, also in the Gage Apartments, another program, um, allowed us to secure thirty units um, at about eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars a year per unit. I spoke to that a little bit in, in more detail during the study session. That's for a two-year term, uh, will allow us to, uh, learn and adapt rent, uh, reduction programs in the future. And then for this project that we're talking about tonight, the Animate City Park Overlook Project, the initial commitment was six hundred thousand dollars. Um, if we move forward with this purchase tonight, it will end up being seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for five income-qualified units. So ownership opportunities for people in specific income brackets. That is, uh, result, results in about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars per unit. Uh, as we talked about, uh, during the retreat in February, two thousand twenty-three, most communities look at about two hundred thousand dollars a unit as a ballpark for getting below-market ownership units. So hopefully that gives you a bigger, bigger picture, um, understanding of how we're using these resources and trying to secure, uh, affordable units across the whole, the whole spectrum. So this specific opportunity that we talked about in more detail last meeting is part of the Animate City Park Overlook Project. Uh, this has been, um, a partnership through the Housing Fund, the Urban Renewal Authority, uh, which includes representation from the county, uh, the school district, and another special district, the, the Business Improvement District. So truly a great community partnership, um, to mix in affordable units within market-rate units. So which is best practice, instead of just lumping all the affordable units in one place in the community. We're trying to have them scattered, have them in, uh, attractive and accessible locations like this, um, just like other market-rate units. So the mixed-income nature of this project is really unique and has garnered a lot of attention from ac- across the state about how we've been able to accomplish this. So as we've gone through the process and the units, this is a rendering, but the units now actually look like this out there. Um, there's, there's been some opportunities to, uh, secure additional units. And that's what, that's what we're, um, asking for approval for tonight. This unit five oh one was under contract, fell out of contract, and instead of letting it just go back out, um, as a slightly reduced price unit, we wanted to step in, reduce that price significantly, put the deed restriction on for the income qualification, and resell it to a qualified buyer. So we appreciate council's support. At the last meeting, this is more of the kind of administrative process, just to document the final purchase price, and all, all the paperwork was included in your, your packet to show, um, exactly what we're proceeding with. So the deed restrictions in your packet, the, the purchase contract is in there as well. After, or at closing, we will record that deed restriction to make sure that's a long-term, in perpetuity, income-qualified unit. We're working with our Partner Homes Fund to find a qualified buyer using previous, uh, lottery applicants that initially expressed interest in the units in this development. So this is, it's a quick snapshot of the steps we've taken to get here. Um, the, uh, budget ordinance from late two thousand twenty-three appropriated the, the funds that we will use uh, to obtain this unit, and, um, this is the recommended motion before you tonight.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Do we have a motion from council?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R dash two thousand twenty four dash twenty-one, authorizing the city manager to close on the purchase of a workforce housing unit at one six-six East Thirty-third Street as directed by city council on March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, and authorized by ordinance twenty-three dash zero zero two zero.
Second.
Council discussion?
I'll just start real quick. I want to, um, congratulate you guys, um, on your creativity and like pushing outside the box, um, for projects across all spectrums. It's not just this project and the deed restriction, but, um, from rentals to, and like really maximizing, one, the money you have to work with, and two, maximizing like council desire. This is clearly important to council. We made it clear years ago, um, that workforce housing and finding affordable housing here was one of our priorities, and what you've done with what we've given you is phenomenal. So I just want to congratulate the entire staff, Eva, your staff, and thank you so much, and I hope you don't stop. Like, no matter how much we be, some must may push back on you or challenge you, like, don't stop thinking outside the box. Don't stop being creative because we need this kind of housing here. And, um, you know, I'm just super proud to have you on our team, so thank you.
Nice.
I, I was not there when the executive session took place, apologies, but I see the update, so just so I understand clearly, this, the, this area had six workforce units, I think, and four deed-restricted units. And this purchase is to buy one of the workforce units and make it into a deed-restricted unit. Is that correct?
Well said.
And then the purchase price for this workforce unit is five hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And, uh, if you can go back a moment, I think we spent, uh, six hundred thousand dollars from the city through partially the URA to, um, establish six workforce units and the four deed-restricted units. And there were other fees, I think, that we waived. Is that correct, or?
Not for this project, no.
Okay, and what is a typical unit sell for, uh, the, the other units, the market price?
They've all been units that have the same bedroom and bathroom count, have all been the same price. This is the price for this unit.
Oh, so they, the workforce houses that we only?
Um, sorry, I misunderstood. The market rate, um, units sold for this same amount. The, the income-qualified units sold for three ninety-nine, and that's what we anticipate to resell this unit for, is three ninety-nine.
So, but if, maybe you can help me explain. If this unit is valued because it's workforce housing at three ninety-nine, why would we buy that unit for a market-priced unit versus we could also buy the market-priced unit and add a deed restriction? Because we already paid, uh, six hundred thousand dollars to get those units.
Um, the distinction is the four income-qualified are price-reduced a hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollars. The six, um, workforce units are only price-reduced ten thousand dollars. Because it's a, it's a much lighter deed restriction. All it requires is that a local worker live in that unit. It's not price-reduced, it's not, um, uh, income-qualified or anything, it's just the local worker qualification. Does that help clarify?
I understand.
And, and that, that is where this unit would have gone if we had not stepped in. It would have been price-reduced by ten thousand dollars and had a lighter deed restriction on it. We felt like the opportunity was, was greatest and the, and the return was greatest to step in and get another price-reduced income-qualified unit.
And would it have gone to that, um, uh, market rate, I guess, minus ten thousand dollars? Because nobody wanted to buy the unit, and it fell through?
Yeah.
So when the contract was established, was there a time limit to, to sell it at that date? And then after the time expires?
Yes. So. Because, and, uh, just a little bit of background there, it's a little that the workforce deed restriction is a different approach. And, um, there was a hesitancy by some buyers to put that on their title. And so I think that's something we, we've learned through the process is how that deed restriction is viewed by people. And the, the price reduction was not significant enough to encourage them to go forward with that.
So then the only question I would have left is, is a ten thousand dollar question. Why would you pay the market price and not the ten thousand?
They are not getting that ten thousand dollar reimbursement. The developer that had, so out of that six hundred thousand, they're not getting the ten thousand that was initially agreed to, and it's going towards the cost of this unit.
Okay, I understand. Okay, well, thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council? Then may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Proton Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Basmonds?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yaazee?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number thirteen, public comment on non-agenda items. Fay, will you read the rules for this portion of public comment, please? And let us know if we have any individuals that would like to speak.
This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comment on topics not on tonight's agenda. When your name is called, please step to the podium and begin your comments by stating your full name, the topic you would like to speak on, and if you are a resident of the city of Durango. Please make your comments directly to city council. Do not expect a response from council or staff. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Unused time is not transferable to other speakers. Comments must be specific to city matters. Personal attacks, profanity, hate speech, derogatory remarks, speech unrelated to city matters, or other speech that is disruptive to the meeting will be ruled out of order by the chair, and any remaining time will be forfeited by the speaker. Exceeding the time limit infringes on the rights of others and is out of order. Only a majority vote of council can extend the time limits. And I will pull that file now. And it looks like we have five people wishing to speak under this section. The first would be Tiffany Chacon, who was indicated she is a city resident.
Thank you. If you could just reiterate your name and if you're a resident.
Perfect, yeah. Hello, everyone. Thank you. My name's Tiffany Chacon. I am not a city of Durango resident, but I do work with the, uh, La Plata Food Equity Coalition, specifically looking at childcare here in our area. And I'm here to talk to you today about fifteen point one, which is for the Ready Grant application that, um, was proposed in support with the Durango Economic Alliance. And I just wanted to state how excited I am that the city is looking to partner and support with greater exploration of childcare needs and strategies to really move this forward and to support the workforce. Earlier today, I was in a meeting, um, led by Early Milestones, Council for a Strong America Colorado, and Ready Nation Council for Strong America Colorado, talking specifically about the need for childcare to support our workforce. And we know our workforce runs our community. Um, I just wanted to share a couple of quick facts that they shared on this report that is now released. I think it might be great for what you all are trying to do. Um, this is comparison from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-four on the impacts of insufficient childcare. The percentage of, um, participants that reported being distracted at work jumped from fifty-nine percent to sixty-eight percent. Those that had to miss a full day of work due to childcare or insufficient childcare jumped from fifty-seven percent to sixty-six percent. And those who had to reduce their work hours jumped from forty-one percent to fifty percent. We know that childcare is an issue that is infecting our entire community, and we know that we need some, as you said earlier, Jessica, out-of-the-box ideas on how to address the childcare crisis that is facing Durango, La Plata County, our state, and our nation. Um, so I'm just really excited that you guys are looking to support this. Excited to see what can be developed over the next few years, really to see how we, as a local community, can support our families to continue to live here. So thank you so much for your time and, um, for continuing to work for our, our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person on our list is Sarah Tober, city resident, followed by Sweetie Marbury after that.
Good evening, city council. Uh, Sarah Tober, the Deputy Director of the La Plata Economic Development Alliance. Um, I am here to speak on behalf of fifteen point one in our work with the city of Durango. We are thrilled, um, that they were, that you all have, uh, put this, uh, application forward for early childcare. Um, this is very similar to what we were able to accomplish with the three-year workforce housing investment strategy, uh, that was published in two thousand twenty-two. There are a number of, uh, items that were called out in, in that strategy that have been implemented by the alliance, uh, including helping to stand the Regional Housing Alliance of La Plata County back up, uh, creating the Catalyst Fund, the Housing Catalyst Fund that the city of Durango has also supported, um, which has meant, um, that we will have three hundred more units of, uh, workforce housing in La Plata County. Um, and this is the same strategy with, uh, this Ready Grant is that we would like to see a child, an early childcare investment strategy created for La Plata County, city of Durango, um, and working with Heather Hawk as well, who's in the audience, uh, with La Plata, uh, Early Childcare Council. So we're very excited to be moving forward in this, uh, initiative, and, um, I hope that you all will support it with this resolution.
Thank you.
Next is Sweetie Marbury, city resident, followed by Sandra Ortiz.
My name is Sweetie Marbury, and I am a city resident. I want to urge the city council to set a priority for the two, two oh oh five reauthorization sales tax. I'm urging city council to have a public meeting in May at the library to get input from residents. The new city hall and police department are very important to our town. I attended the public meeting on next steps, and with ninety-two other people. That was amazing to see that many people in the room. The questions that were asked were excellent. However, at least six people still had their hands up when the staff ended the meeting. That was very upsetting. There were angry people at the, at that meeting. There were also three former mayors at that meeting, listening and asking questions. There had been no public meetings about the reauthorization of the two oh five ballot language. There are no boards for Parks and Recreation, Natural Lands, or Multimodal to get any input to support this ballot, and I find that very troubling. I support the reauthorization because the police department is a leaky shoebox and should be sold. And this city hall also should be sold to reduce the debt that would be incurred by the reauthorization. We're trading debt for debt. That makes common sense to me. City council, time is flying. It's basically May. And the ballot is coming up where you must set the language. Well, what is the language? I'm asking the city attorney to read the two oh five ballot so that at least people who vote will be more informed about what's on the table. Thank you very much. Let's get this job done.
Thank you.
Next to Sandra Ortiz, followed by Carolina Diaz.
I didn't get the name. What did you say?
Sandra Ortiz?
Chief on Zoom.
Okay. And there was someone else who wanted to speak live, Fay?
We have Carolina Ortiz. Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Hello, me escucha?
Hello?
Me escucha? Hello?
Yes. Hi, we can hear you.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear us? You can start by stating your name and if you're a resident of the city.
Buenas tardes. pues simplement las personas se van a ver en la necesidad de quedarse en casa. en la necesidad de quedarse en casa. Y pues no va a ser posible la mano de obra para poder que Durango tenga la economía que tiene. Entonces esto me hace muy feliz el escuchar todos estos planteamientos. Y sé que vamos a, a lograr los objetivos que tenemos. Y es que los niños de la comunidad latina tengan una educación idónea y equitativa como debe de ser. Gracias.
Thank you very much. And is there another?
I have a Carolina Diaz.
Hola, buenas tardes. Me escuchan?
Yes, we can hear you.
Gracias. Bueno, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Carolina Diaz. Soy la coordinadora del programa de servicios legales del Centro de Recursos de Inmigrantes Compañeros. Estamos ubicados aquí en Durango y quiero apoyar también esta, esta idea, esta estrategia que tiene que ver con el acceso de los niños de cero a cuatro años a centros de cuidado infantil. Sabemos que nuestra comunidad inmigrante es una comunidad que se caracteriza por ser trabajadora. Sabemos que más del 50% de nuestra comunidad tiene más de dos trabajos. La mayoría de nosotros tiene dos y tres trabajos en restaurantes, compañías de limpieza, compañías de construcción, jardinería. Pero luego de la pandemia, el cuidado infantil de nuestros niños, bueno, que han sido producto de la pandemia y del encierro que estuvimos, pues impide que podamos trabajar, impide que podamos ser autosostenibles, impide que podamos involucrarnos activamente en la economía. Entonces realmente estoy aquí para, para decir que de verdad necesitamos encontrar soluciones sostenibles que lleven a los niños a centros de cuidado infantil seguros y que la transición a la escuela, al distrito escolar 9R sea pues pacífico para los niños, sea saludable para los niños, y que los padres y madres podamos reactivarnos en la economía como es una característica de la comunidad inmigrante. Entonces apoyo completamente y realmente estoy muy emocionada de que esta conversación se esté dando, de que esto esté pasando. Porque llevamos dos años hablando de esto, pero no encontramos soluciones. Entonces muchas gracias.
Wonderful. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to join us today?
That is the end of the people who had signed up by the time we called the item.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. With that, we will move on to item number 15. Fay, may we have a reading of 15.1, please?
15.1 is authorization for the mayor to sign a support letter for a rural economic development initiative, Ready Grant in partnership with the La Plata Economic Development Alliance submitted by Community Development and Finance Departments.
And I think we have a staff presentation again with Scott Shine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Some projects are a little more complex than others. This one's pretty straightforward. And you just heard from the community about the need. This is a great way for the city to provide support for community organizations. We're not directly contributing any cash to this project. We're just providing the administrative support through being the applicant to DOLA and then facilitating monthly reports and, or quarterly reports and, and reporting back to DOLA. So it's been a great partnership to work with the alliance on a number of different fronts. And we did a similar model, I think it was 2021, for a Ready Grant for a housing investment strategy. So really just kind of replicating that success and, and orienting it towards childcare, which, as you've heard, is a, is a big need right now in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion from council?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a support letter for a rural economic development initiative, Ready Grant in partnership with the La Plata Economic Development Alliance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Council discussion.
I just want to say that childcare is a big concern in our society, in our community. And I think the unavailability or the cost of it is not really fair to all income levels in our community. So I think this grant application support is definitely beneficial. I would definitely support it, even though it's just a strategy. It's not. And I also encourage you to reach out to city staff and counselors for direct support because there's another source that might be available to you. So thank you.
I got some nuts and bolts questions. Scott, could I ask you a couple of questions regarding this? When, when will we potentially hear back on the grant application results?
You're there. I'm gonna also-
Oh, thank you.
Maybe Sarah.
Sure, yeah, Sarah, if you wouldn't mind come up, that'd be great.
Sarah Tober, again, La Plata Economic Development Alliance. We are having a meeting with Patrick this week with DOLA. And so we will know if we'll get funding by the end of this month.
At the end of the month? Then if you do get that funding, do you have a, a rough idea of like how long that study would take place? Is it be like a three-month, a six-month, like a one-year study?
We are, our plan is to have it done by the end of summer, knowing that that might be a little bit tight of a turnaround for sure by the end of this year.
Okay, so May to potentially to August, having that study conducted? Awesome. And then who, who's going to help facilitate, like which groups to reach out to, to kind of garner some of that public input?
Absolutely. Um, so the alliance was able to get a couple of partners together for the application itself, one of which is the Regional Housing Alliance of La Plata County, which represents all four governments of La Plata County, La Plata County, Town of Ignacio, Town of Bayfield, and the city of Durango. And so the RHA has voted to support this project. And actually, part of the match is the housing needs assessment that the RHA currently has an RFQ out for. So through that housing needs assessment, we'll also be able to pull a little more data around childcare needs. And as well as the Early Childcare Council of La Plata County, they have pulled together a lot of this data as well. We just don't have it culled in one place. And as the Good Food Collective also talked about today, the Latinx childcare movement, they have created an assessment as well. So we'll be able to use a lot of that data. But this is going to be a little bit more overarching of understanding the childcare needs so that we can create strategies around investing in it.
Awesome. Well, this is really exciting, number one, to even conduct the assessment to figure out what we need. But also such a quick turnaround, relatively speaking. So to be potentially, you know, consider that the study could be conducted and the results maybe by Q4, like October-ish?
Yeah, yeah, we, we definitely have a lot of that data already. And so being able to, to fully call it, much less creating some community polling as well around it. We have done, on the alliance side, we've done a lot of work through Project Run, through Project Run and the Oetic Grant with, with FLC as our partner. One of the two top things that industry informed us that they needed help on was leadership in childcare. So we've actually been digging into the data around childcare and what, what opportunities there are already through that program. So this study will help pull all this information together.
Well, I'm super impressed and I'm super excited. So thank you for administering this grant and really doing the legwork for something that really is tangible, that really creates, really creates impact for all of our workforce. So thank you for addressing this.
Do you sleep? Like, I'm just wondering.
I'll sleep when I die.
Yeah, I guess. I'm like, we're on the board of the alliance with, with them. And between the RHA Housing Initiatives, Project Run, and now this, I had no idea we were even, or the alliance was even a part of this. It's amazing. It's great. It's something. I mean, I have employees that have kids that have, I mean, one of them drives to Bayfield every day to drop her kiddo off at daycare and then drives back. But 17 years ago, when I had my kids, I struggled with daycare. And so, and I'm sure it's just compounding and worse now since the pandemic. And so thank you so much. I think our partnership with the alliance is amazing across so many levels. And I'm just so thankful for it. And yeah, it's a no-brainer to me. So thanks.
Thank you.
I would just reiterate, thank you so much for taking the lead on this. We're very happy to be collaborating with you and look forward to seeing if we continue to support this initiative going forward.
I would like to say that the RHA recognizes that the workforce housing and childcare is typically a cross-section of issues. So that's another reason why they wanted to support this further.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right. With that, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Yaze?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Buehl?
Yes.
Counselor Basmanz?
Yes.
All right. Does any, uh, counselor have any other, uh, new business item they would like to bring up this evening? Okay.
I would like to bring up the 2005 sales tax initiative and maybe to start thinking about the language and how we're going to go about working this out. So if we get it on the agenda at some point, that'd be great.
Counselor thoughts?
I think Jose and I, one-on-one, has mentioned a timeline of things. And so I don't know.
Maybe we can work on the timeline. Just get us some kind of game plan.
Yeah. So the kind of what we're looking at is, wow, right here, like that staff's so quick. They, they have it ready to go on a, on a timeline. What we are looking for is, we have one more engagement with the community in regards to the PD City Hall portion of that building on the interior, which is on April 30th. After that, in May, we would begin that dialogue with the city council that would allow our architect to give us some figures of what they believe the PD City Hall would cost. And so the plan for the 2005 sales tax, as we've discussed with council informally, there hasn't been a vote on it, but we've discussed it some meetings, would be the PD City Hall taking that part of Florida and the library debt portion, and then keeping the other half continued for the parks and recreational uses. So we are getting there. We just need to find out what that cost of the PD City Hall building is going to be so we can determine the totality of what tax we would need. But that, those conversations will be having with the council in the month of May.
Wonderful. Any other new business items from council? Okay. Does anyone have any requests for excused absences? All right. Seeing none, may we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.